Move through quickly and we'll have more time to hear what the candidates have to say. So turn off your cell phones. It cleans and I saw somebody doing it. Don't use your cell phones in pictures. Don't use it to record and don't use it to videotape. The media center is doing that for us. And it will be rebroadcast. And you'll have plenty of opportunity to see this again when you go on to channel twenty-six. And the media center will tell us sometime when it's going to be rebroadcast. So let me come to the logistics and the ground rules for this forum that the candidates have agreed to. They agreed that there'll be no substitutes and they're all here, so that's great. They apply numbers, for random numbers, but that's the order. That will be presenting their opening statements and the closing statements will be in reverse order. And I've sort of created a little random key to the order which they answer the questions. So everybody will have equal opportunity and the same amount of time. When the candidates answer questions, this is what they agreed to. They'll answer the question with the subject at hand. They're not going to deviate from the subject matter. And I'm going to enforce the time limits and I'll tell you about those in a minute. A time keeper will be holding up. There's a minute left. He'll be holding up one minute. Time for the candidates. And when there's thirty seconds left, he'll hold up the thirty second. And when it's time to stop, she'll say stop. I'll be keeping say it, but she'll hold it up. And I will encourage you to stop. Do it as nice a way as I can. That way we can get through as much as possible. We have question collectors. Now, this is an opportunity for you as the audience to ask all the candidates a question. And we ask you that the topic of the question be one that all the candidates can answer. Please do not ask a question that's specific to one candidate. And, I don't remember.
Member.
That means? There's something missing? Anyway, back to getting to what I was saying. Make the questions general so that all the candidates can answer them. You know, if you have some general issues and you want to hear what their thoughts on that issue. But I will not be asking any questions that are directed to any specific candidate. And all the candidates will answer all the questions. And they'll have one minute for their answers. So, I think I'll repeat that there'll be no applause or any kind of campaigning in the room. The candidates have all their campaign materials outside. And you can pick those up and read all about it. So the format, each of the candidates will have two minutes for their opening statements. And one minute to answer the questions. And then closing statements for one and a half minutes. It's a good practice to be concise. So I think now I can begin the forum. The candidates, their names are up there. We have Christopher Boyd, and I'm going to call him Chris. And Alex Sharp, we'll be calling him Alex. And Ken Dallowber, Ken. And Stacy Ashland. And we'll call Stacy's. And we agree that it will be on a first main basis. And Kathy Jordan is fifth. Kathy, then Sonic?
Shonik.
Shonik. Shonik. Is number six. So, Chris? You may start with your two-minute opening statement, followed by Alex.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by greeting everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for celebrating, shall we say, a wonderful system that started back in Athens, Athenian democracy. And hopefully we'll carry that by future, to the future with a lot of reason and hope. Then I'd like to greet everybody here that speaks Chinese. And I'd like to greet everybody in Spanish. Señores y señoras, les agradezco mucho que hayan venido. Cada uno de nosotros vale. Los hijos de ustedes son el futuro de esta nación. And thank you very much for listening. I'm here as a Palo Alto parent. Thirty, I think thirty percent of the parents are concerned and worried about some of the sexual harassment, sexist assaults, special student education problems, and student wellness. Ready enough to fight. Thirty percent hope the problem will be solved, but don't feel that they really have to do anything activist to actually get something done. And forty percent feel just the school will take it over. I feel this is, along with educational excellence, a fundamental issue that my campaign wants to address. We really need to revamp our whole school and come up with new ideas that will lead us to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex. And please, may everyone, candidates, speak into the microphone so that the audience can hear you well. Thank you. Alex will be followed by Ken.
I'm running because there are issues the school board doesn't notice or see. I was born and grew up here and went to Palo Alto schools from kindergarten to twelfth grade. And I experienced ground level issues firsthand compared to those who might not necessarily experience them at the top. I graduated from Paly three years ago and am a current student at Foothill College. Since anyone eighteen or older living in Palo Alto can run for public office, and there have been a lot of complaints against the district, I figured I could do a better job, so I decided to participate. Recently, I had an episode of depression. And getting out and advocating for students and the community is beneficial to both me and the people I'm advocating for. Being open about this helps end the stigma around mental health. The main reason I'm running for is for mental health and to support our kids mentally and physically so they can focus on learning. The overarching theme to help this and other issues, such as bullying, sexual harassment, and compliance with individuals with disability, Education Act, is accountability and professionalism. Teachers and staff should know what they are teaching and doing, why they are doing it, and what the rules are. Accountability can also be a positive thing, such as being accountable for excellent teachers. We should look at incentivizing teachers by awarding grants and paid faticles for those who do excellent, inclusive, and innovative work. Accountability provides students with the best education. I'll bring my firsthand experience on the issues, not just how they are discussed by those who don't go through them, and work with others to come up with solutions that provide flexibility and access for all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the incumbent president of the school board. And the classic question for someone seeking reelection is, are we better off than we were four years ago? And the answer to that question is absolutely yes, even though there's still much work to be done. I ran four years ago on some key promises. I promised to work on improving the well-being of our students after a series of tragic suicides at Gunn High School. We've improved mental health services and built wellness centers. We eliminated early morning academic classes. We're implementing an advisory program at Gunn and social-emotional learning across the district. Students are better off. I promised to improve special education. We changed our special education law firm and are building a cooperative rather than conflictual relationship with families. The school board asked for a special education plan and this summer put a million and a half dollars into that plan with more to come. That means better services for our students. I promised a better-run school district. I didn't win every battle. I lost a fight on compensation contract that created a self-instructed budget deficit. But I've made the tough choices to help put new leadership into place that I think is among the best in the state. Our school board is more effective, more focused, and gets more done in less time. That means better decisions for students. I promised to fix the district's broken compliance with Title IX. We did that. We now have a Title IX office that the former head of the Office for Civil Rights called a model for K-12 districts across the country. Students who experience harassment and discrimination now have a process that follows the law. There are other areas of progress that I hope we get to: equity, transparency, student voice. But I'll close with a suggestion that as you listen to this debate, listen for solutions, not just for problems. And when you hear about problems, ask yourself if these are on the list of things that are already in progress in terms of solutions or that you've already fixed. We have plenty of work ahead of us. I asked for your vote in November to keep doing that.
Thank you. Stacy.
Thank you first to the League of Women Voters and PTA Council for having us here tonight. My name is Stacy Ashland. And a brief bit about my educational background. I hold a bachelor's in math and computer science from the University of Illinois and a master's in computer science from Virginia Tech. My career in software is in the area of user experience research and design. My qualifications for a seat on this board include that I have been elected and served on the Site Council at Dreonis Elementary School and as well as Gunn High School. And our Site Councils, for those that might not be familiar, are mandated by the State Department of Education to oversee state funding according to school and district goals. I was appointed by the City Council and served on the Parks and Recreation Commission, where our responsibilities intersected with the school district's responsibilities in areas such as safe routes to school, after-school enrichment programs, summer camps, and middle school athletics. Additionally, I served as an executive board member for ten years on our Advisory Committee for Special Education and Inclusion, where I've advocated for both academic opportunities and community connectedness for all students. And I currently serve as the co-chair in this capacity for Palo Alto, Mountain View, and La Salto school districts combined, where we also advocated this capacity throughout Santa Clara County. I'm running for a seat on this board for three main reasons. Number one, to broaden the definition of student success so that all students have the opportunity for high achievement in academics as well as social-emotional health and well-being. I will be a champion for teachers and advocate for teacher flexibility and innovation to leverage teachers' individual strengths to engage their students. And I will elevate the transparency and accountability on our board to inspire and include all students to reach their highest potential.
Thank you, Stacy. Kathy.
Yes. I want to say thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. Especially want to thank you for the nonpartisan and objective advice when looking at those long and confusing propositions on the ballot. I've certainly looked at the League's website for those. Thank you. Also want to thank PTAC and everyone else who helped organize this event tonight. Like so many of us here, I came from somewhere else. I'm originally from the East Coast, Philadelphia. I came out here to play tennis at Stanford and also to get an education. After playing tennis professionally, I decided to stay here. I got married and after having a child, we bought a house. We chose Palo Alto because of the excellent public schools, and maybe you did too. I went to public school. I believe in public schools. My older one went all the way through policy unified. My younger one is still in the district. We had a good experience in the district. And like so many of you, I also volunteered in the schools. I think we have a lot to be proud of in our school district. At the same time, I think we can acknowledge when there are problems so that we might fix them. There has been fiscal mismanagement at the district, the six-million-dollar blunder, the five-million-dollar error before that. Last year, there was an extra million dollars spent on legal expenses due to noncompliance. The sexual assaults at Paly, the district's own report showed it hadn't followed the laws. Instructional minutes. The proposed Paly Bell schedule was going to be approximately twenty-one days short out of a hundred and eighty days school year. Yet our board members said that the board didn't need to approve Paly's bell schedule. Change is needed on the school one. The district needs oversight. I hope to earn your vote to make that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon.
My name is Shonik Dara. And this district is my home. I'm a future father in this district and a former student. I graduated right at the cusp of the first wave of student suicides. And that tied me irrevocably to the issue of student wellness and welfare in this district. Professionally, I'm an attorney, a complex litigator. I deal with large organizations, large processes, much like this district. And I also have experience with educational governance. I've been the president of the Student Bar Association at my law school. And then later, as an attorney, I was appointed by our Supreme Court to a committee tasked with reevaluating our bar exam. And through those lenses, I've seen that this district really needs professional governance. It needs legal compliance, fiscal management, the threshold requirements to ensure that we are actually executing on our vision and our priorities, that we are turning our good ideas into realities for the families and students we serve. And I have the skills and the experience to make that happen. Not just the professional experience, but the lived experience in this district. My wife and I, she grew up here as well. We're in a unique position. We have the district's schools behind us, but also our future. And that is really compelling. It compels me to do everything I possibly can to ensure that every school in this district is offering the best opportunities for success for students and my future kids. Building a floor so that no student falls through the cracks and raising the ceiling for success so that every student has every opportunity to reach their own individual potential. And that's why I'm running. That's why I'm here tonight. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTA Council for giving me and giving all of us the opportunity to share our visions with you and have a dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Now we'll turn to our questions. And I don't know if I made it clear, but we have volunteers who are collecting your questions. And our questions orders will sort them and give them to me. I'll tell you the order in advance before I ask the questions so you can start thinking about it. It's going to be Stacy, Shonik, Alex, Kathy, Chris, and Ken. The question number one, okay? Okay, so Stacy. And each of you will have a minute to answer the question. What do you see as the role of a school board member and what strengths and experiences do you bring to this role?
The role of the school board members are to hire and fire the superintendent as well as oversee the management of our district. What I bring to this is experience, not only in the capacities that I've served on Site Council, on PTA, on the High Advisory Board, but also as a parent who's raised both of my children through this district from preschool through graduation. My younger one is still a junior currently in high school. What I bring to this role is that experience of advocating and working together with parents, with teachers, and community members, as well as the administration on the staff, for the positive outcome for all our students. I take a very collaborative, cooperative approach. And I believe that I can bring that strength to the board so that we may also move forward in a positive direction and keep work together with our community from a position of trust on the board.
Thank you. Sharon.
The role of the board is vision and policy direction for the district. The district influence the board's vision. And so the most important thing that we can do to affect that is to have effective processes for governance. That means making sure that we are doing everything we can to execute on our vision, that we have a collective unified vision of the district and clear leadership to make that happen. Hiring the best superintendents and making sure the best team is in place within the district is key to that, as well as engaging with all members of the community to make sure all perspectives are heard and that we as a board can make a thoughtful, informed decision. In my experience with governance, I've done just that. And every day in my job, I work in a professional collaborative environment that is very fast-paced and requires thoughtful and nuanced solutions to problems. Problems that can only be solved by working together and reaching a consensus.
Thank you. Alex.
I think the most important thing that the board does is to keep the policies in a forward direction that we should be keeping up to the times and make sure that everything is beneficial to the students. And that another job is that, once these policies are in place, we need to create a system and be responsible for how it's implemented ultimately. Because that's another factor that might not be looked at otherwise. And then, another thing that the board is responsible for is the community, that this is a public official and we serve the public and that the constituents' voices need to be heard. And that is something that I think is a bit lacking currently.
Thank you. Kathy.
The board has some set responsibilities that have been mentioned: to hire and supervise the superintendent to set goals and priorities for the district, to help in managing the resources for the school district. The board also represents our community and must be responsive to it. The community is its constituents, as their children, our children, are in the schools. I bring someone who brings common sense. And I'm a parent whose children have gone through the district and who remain in the district. So I bring that perspective of a parent and having a student and know what parents and students go through in this district. To sum up, the board has both operational as well as school setting responsibilities. But as elected officials, we must be responsive to our community, as that is who we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
I take a little bit of a different tack and define the board as someone who is given trust of the children. Someone who is in place. Okay. I'm sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
So, I see the board, first and foremost, as closer to representing trust. As parents, we give the board trust. Students give the board trust. And I see the students and parents very looking to the board to take a far bigger role than to enforce rules. That, of course, has to be done. But I see the board as a bigger body that is a collective of all of our thoughts and minds and care for our children. And I see my job on the board as to be out in the schools, thinking ahead.
Thank you. Ken.
I see the role of a board member as a trustee for the community acting on behalf of students. So, the community, this community and the larger state and national community is entrusting the board and the district with almost a quarter of a billion dollars a year now to educate our students. And our job is to make sure that those dollars are spent as effectively as possible and that they're spent in a way that has the maximum impact on the education of every child. Practically speaking, I think the role of a board member is oversight. So ensuring that the district is in compliance, that there's good management. And when that isn't the case, to step in and put better management in place, which I've had to do at some points. And setting policies, so direction around issues like homework and school lunch and suicide prevention policy and all the things that come in front of the school.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, now we'll go to question two. And I want to thank the candidates for keeping with the time limits. You're doing well. Okay, and the next question, I'll tell you the order that you're going to go in. Kathy, Chris, Shonik, Ken, Stacy, Alex. Okay? Okay, so this question. What changes, if any, are you hoping to bring about as a result of your service on the board agenda? Kathy.
Yes, thank you. I would like to see a number of changes come about as a result of my service. I would like to see responsible fiscal management. I would like to work towards that. I would like to work towards making sure that our students come first. I would also like to work towards enhanced transparency and accountability within the school district. And I would like to make sure that we keep our focus on achieving academic excellence for all of our students, regardless of where they are on the academic spectrum. Thank you.
Chris.
I would like to push us into the top rung of education in the world. I want to see Palo Alto Unified School District up there with Finland, China, Singapore, with Korea. And I want to do it in an inclusive way. I want to look and reach out to education in a way that includes all students, that isn't elitist, that includes all cultures. And I also want to bring and reform what is-
I'm sorry, I think we're done. I'm sorry. Oh, gee. I'm sorry.
I apologize. So I really want to bring this issue of how to stop sexual assault, expand special education and student wellness. It hasn't even begun. I mean, we talk about progress, but we're very, very far away from what needs to be done. And I'm going to dedicate myself to trying to reach those two objectives simultaneously.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion on the call.
I apologize.
We're all volunteers. I don't know if that's an excuse or not. Thank you, though.
I'd like to build a culture of compliance in this district. And our decision recently to hire General Counsel is a great step in that direction. Be better about fiscal management. Make sure we're not going into deficits year after year. And most importantly, build a floor for our students so no one is slipping through the cracks. Focus in on equity and really address the causes of the achievement gap. Focus on building transitional kindergarten in all of our elementary schools. Expand out how we look at data and bake in institutional processes for using that data to target individualized resources to our students. Address mental health by continuing to expand our wellness centers and our social-emotional learning curriculum. And raise the ceiling for success for every student by expanding those innovative programs in our district that are so successful that focus on real-life application, integrated curricula, and project-based learning. And build relationships with our industry leaders and local community colleges to offer broader career and college pathways for our students so that every student can thrive.
Thank you. Ken.
So my reason for being on the school board is to improve student well-being and to ensure that we teach every child. And so there are some specific things that I really want to focus on in a second term. Fully implementing the district's homework policy so that students have reasonable workloads that let them get to sleep on time and have arrived after school and arrive well-rested. Closing the achievement gap. And I think we need to do a much better job of producing accountability in site leaders for the performance of their schools and raising the achievement of their students. And then continuing to work on the progress that I alluded to in my opening statement around fiscal responsibility, around special education, around a well-managed and well-functioning school district.
Thank you. Stacy.
Yeah, I would bring to the board a vision and a tone of inclusiveness and equity, primarily focusing on, like some of my colleagues have already mentioned up here tonight, the underrepresented minorities who are consistently falling behind in education outcomes of other groups in our district. One example is our Avid program for struggling students, which compared to the school districts in Menlo Park and Mountain View La Saltos, our program is significantly smaller and needs to be resourced in a comparable method so that all of our students, including first-generation students, are on a college track if that is the opportunity they want to pursue. So primarily, I would bring effective methods so that we are opening opportunities beyond the select group that they are currently available to, to make sure that they're available to all students in our district.
Thank you. And Alex.
I think a big thing that is lacking is educating the teachers on what they're required to do. And then having a third-party monitoring system to make sure that they are complying with what they are required to do. And then, I think a big thing that we do not necessarily know what the priorities should be, or it doesn't seem like they are managed well. And so I think sitting down and assessing and organizing the priorities in some sort of fashion for spending and effort required to manage them.
Thank you. Okay, now we have our third question. And the order will be, I hope I'm saying your name right. Shonik?
Shonik.
Shonik. Shonik, Stacy, Kathy, Alex, Ken, and Chris. Okay, so this question is, what suggestions do you have for how the district can be more transparent while upholding privacy?
The district needs a new position of ambassador. I think that is a critical thing that we need to do. I think that is a critical thing that we need to do. Other districts in California have an office of the ombuds, San Francisco, Sacramento, Pasadena, Oakland, all larger districts than our own, but I think we can all agree that our district has large district problems. And an office of the ombuds would be critical to building that trust and that transparency because it would be a position, not like how we have right now. I think that the assistant superintendent's job description includes ombudsman, but this would be an office that would report directly to the board. And that means that there would be oversight exercised by the community. And so, an ombud that reports directly to the board means that you maintain the integrity of independent investigations. It means that community members have somebody to go to as guidance when they're trying to navigate the difficult and frustrating area of IEDs and 504 plans and that when it comes to reporting any issues, there's somebody there.
Kathy? Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry.
Thank you. In the issues of transparency and privacy, the transparency is something that I will work on regarding our processes and our communication. What primarily parents and families and members of the community want to know is how decisions are made, when they're made, and how people can have an impact on that conversation. So those are the processes that I would increase transparency on. And that is why I support things like our current board policy of the two-meeting rule that gives the community a chance to hear and discuss and speak to an issue, knowing that it will not be voted on until a subsequent meeting when they will also have an additional chance to speak to that issue. Additionally, regarding privacy, I will work for ongoing training and support of our teachers and our staff so that they know when unique situations arise for the first time, which information they can divulge and how to proceed in a manner of supporting that student while also maintaining their privacy.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, regarding transparency in the district while maintaining privacy, the district is a public entity. It's funded by our public tax dollars with public employees working for it. And there's no expectation of privacy for public employees, while there is privacy expected for students. Student information is always private. And for the district, the district doesn't have the expectation also of privacy, for example, when settling lawsuits with our taxpayer dollars. Anything that can be made public legally should be made public. And this includes, for example, the November 2015 Cozen Report, which documents the Cali administration's mishandling of the response to a sexual assault incident. And I call upon the school board to remove these improper redactions that are in that report for the sake of transparency and student safety. To sum up, the school district is a public entity and I believe it has to be transparent to us, the taxpayers who finance it.
Thank you. Alex?
I agree with the two-meeting rule. I think having access to public opinion and then being able to think over and revise what is brought up to the board the next meeting is a very important step for transparency. And I think another thing is ease of access of information on the websites where it is very difficult to manage and navigate through for most people. And so, some form of management and organization to make it so that people, if they want to look for information, it's easy to find.
Thank you. Ken?
This question points to this central need to maintain student privacy while being transparent. The November 2013 Cozen Report that Kathy referred to was redacted for student privacy. It was a Title IX report. I don't think it's inaccurate to say that those redactions were anything other than-
I'm talking about employees.
We will not have any interruptions, please. Thank you.
So, that report was redacted to the extent required by law and not more than that and it's false to claim otherwise. This board, with my support, has really pushed the envelope on transparency. Our ability to discuss, for example, the sexual assault penalty at Raleigh is a result of the board's decision to commission, in a way that was unprecedented for this district, a full and public report on what happened in that case and then to use that to make extraordinary improvements in compliance. So, this board with me, I think, in a leading role has really taken transparency seriously.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I think, I hate to say this, but I think we're in the dark ages as far as transparency is concerned at the Palo Alto Unified School District. And we really have to transform an attitude, which is a defensive attitude, it is a secretive attitude, and it is an attitude that certain people make decisions, and turn that upside down and realize that parents making decisions is an extremely powerful tool for getting on to the right track here. I'd identify three particular areas. Student wellness, maybe some of you know of a product that Stanford has invented, which is the Be Well System. It actually created a system where everybody's involved in finding out and participating in wellness. And I would cite that as an example of what we need across the board in student wellness, special education, Title IX issues, as well as the board and the budget.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to the next question. This is question four and it will be in this order. Alex, Ken, Stacy, Chris, Shana and Kathy. Okay? Okay. This is sort of a three-part question, but do your best to answer it one minute. What is your position regarding curriculum recommendations such as mandatory computer science classes for high school graduation, foreign language in the elementary school and eliminating AP classes?
Good question. Read it, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. I'll do it again.
Thank you.
What's your position on these recommendations? Mandatory computer science classes for high school graduation, foreign language in the elementary school and eliminating APs?
So, for the computer science classes, I think that it is a very useful skill, but I don't necessarily think that it should be mandatory to graduate. Whereas with the language skills, I think that it is very important to get a perspective of a different culture, which is what you're getting through learning a different language. And that if you can broaden your horizons through a different culture, you will gain a lot of experience in life and to help you through. And then for APs, I think they're there for a reason and I don't think we should get rid of them, but I don't necessarily think we should push for them either. I think if a student is up to take it, that's there for all of you.
Thank you, Ken.
So, I'm in favor of a mandatory computer science requirement for graduation. I think computer science is a fundamental skill to be a citizen in this economy and at this time. And I think that, I think probably the only way, certainly the only way to quickly address the gender gap that we see in our high schools around taking computer science classes is to make it a graduation requirement. I support foreign languages in elementary schools. I did four years ago. The reason we didn't get to it is because of the fiscal implications. I'd love to do it in a second term and I am not in favor of eliminating AP classes.
Thank you. Stacy?
I've been following the mandatory computer science high school graduation conversation that's been happening across our state and we do have a lot of work to determine how that will be fit into a curriculum that's already quite packed right now. We want to make sure that we do offer that computer science literacy in a way that does level the playing field rather than further elevate the students who are already at the top and further penalize students who are already struggling. Foreign language at the elementary school is something I've been advocating for a long time as well. We have our two immersion programs, which are extreme, and we need to do pilot programs so that we can share best practices at the elementary schools to expose our children. And I am not in favor of eliminating APs. That is very much a personal choice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I think we need, of course, to continue in our current curriculum, but we need to be very aware that the curriculum must change totally. It is far too inefficient in the way it's laid out, just comparing what a student would get in Europe, for example. They would be studying physics, biology, chemistry, math every single year. We don't have to put it in different year categories, but it goes even further than that. Elementary education is largely wasted. We see in different programs, children who are happily playing and that's the time to introduce computer science. So by the time they get to middle school and high school, they've already learnt science, learnt computer science, who play through immersive environments and it's actually a non-issue. Children are natural programmers. If you're two years old, you can program.
Shana?
Graduation requirement for computer science is important because it will drive us to create those programs at lower grades as well to meet that graduation requirement. And that is what will actually help bridge the achievement gap, which later on in Silicon Valley especially turns into a very real income gap when it comes to minorities versus non-minorities. Foreign languages in the elementary schools, I think, are critical. New languages, they promote us to think in different ways, new ways of creative thinking, new ways of looking at the world, not to mention that learning a foreign language is a way to be extremely competitive in the modern economy and just a way to be much more dynamic member of this world community that we live in. And finally, I don't support limiting APs. I do think we should broaden the opportunities for APs by making sure that there are sufficient humanities APs offered at both schools so students can have their choice and their pick when they're choosing advanced courses to take.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Yes, I listened to the students talk about the computer science requirement and I also listened to the students talking about that they would like to see more humanities offered. I would not support requiring computer science as a mandatory requirement. As for the foreign language requirement, elementary school you referred to, I think foreign language would be great, but I don't think it should necessarily be a requirement. It'd be great if it was offered. I certainly am not in favor of eliminating APs. I think that we cannot ignore the college admissions process. Rigor is a part of that and many of our students want to challenge themselves, take honors classes and APs, and so of course they should be offered. It's a personal choice.
Thank you. Okay, and this question will be in this order. Ken, Kathy, Chris, Shana, Alex and Stacy. This question says, "Our community is diverse, yet our candidate pool does not reflect this diversity. How will you engage diverse populations to ensure their voices are heard?"
I'm sorry, "our" doesn't reflect the diversity. I missed the second word of your question.
"Our," the candidate pool of all of you.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I think it's really important to have a board and the city council that reflect the community. And I worked hard, some of you in the room may know because I tried to twist your arm to join the school board, to create a more diverse group of candidates. And I think that would have been a good thing. In terms of encouraging participation on the school board, there are district committees, the bond oversight committee, there are sort of feeder committees and roles for the school board and I think the PTA, the PTA council. And I think increasing recruitment into those groups so that people have an opportunity to get their feet wet before running for the school board would be a great idea. And I'm encouraged to see that kind of change happening in many of these bodies. I think we can do more and do better, certainly at the level of district committees. Some of you may have heard me suggest, that I'll face the sentence, that we change the reneaming committee to increase its representativeness for, in part, for this reason.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, I think we do recognize that the candidate pool does not reflect diversity and I think probably many of us would like to see that changed. We do have something before the board about the Voting Rights Act and if we do discover that our community is segmented by location and race, I would certainly be supportive of voting my district to make sure that all of the voices in our community can be heard. Thank you.
Chris?
I honestly think that the Voting Act proposal doesn't go far enough. It's very hard to elect unless one is culturally sensitive, different kinds of ethnicities into the board, especially thinking of Hispanic and Chinese, which are underrepresented and other Asian minorities. But what I feel we need to do is constantly have a process of outreach so that those communities are absorbed at the board level and input is taken of issues that are so important. For example, so many Hispanic students are just bumped up even though their academic performance is below standard, they're passed to the next grade. So many Hispanic parents have come to me and said that, for the record, I am a Hispanic parent and I feel that the school board-
Thank you. Alex? Oh, no, Shana, sorry.
There are so many answers to this question, so I'll focus on one, which is the California Voting Rights Act that we've talked about a couple of times, so it might be familiar to the room. You know, we should encourage the public to divide the district for the purpose of elections so we can have district elections. There is an assumption in this community that our diversity is not geographically segregated into pockets. I think we should challenge that assumption. I've done an analysis, a brief analysis of the census data from 2012 as well as the American Community Survey from 2016, and there do appear to be geographic pockets of minorities in Palo Alto. So we should really get the data and do a scientific study on that. And if that's the case, district elections are the way to go. If that's not the case, district elections will still help to increase diversity because what they'll do is they'll cut down the amount of money it takes to run a successful board campaign.
Thank you. Alex?
I think giving people who might want to run or have an interest access to information on how to run, kind of like how I went to the registrar of voters in San Jose and went to a class that talked about all the paperwork you'd have to file and everything to manage a campaign. And I think having the resources available here, because the district is supposed to have the paperwork in the district office, which should be here, but that was not available when I came here for paperwork. And so I had to go back to the registrar of voters in San Jose, which I think limits the possibility of underrepresented people. And that, I think, if you're not able to get people onto council, onto the board, then going into the communities for local lunches or coffee talks.
Thank you. Stacy?
I would like to first clarify that diversity is something that's not necessarily visible. While sometimes diversity is, in terms of race or ability or disability, it can also be background and family background and experiences that aren't necessarily visible to the casual observer. Second of all, the district elections will cost a significant amount of resources for this district and rather than jump to that solution, let's first address what the problem we're trying to solve is. And the reason, the way I would do that is by encouraging active community participation in a way that is both accessible and meaningful to the community. We need innovative solutions and a welcoming way that doesn't require all parents to commit full-time to volunteering to this district and before they are able to feel qualified to run for the board.
Thank you. Okay, now we have one other question on a different topic. This will be Chris, Shana, Alex, Kathy, Stacy and Ken. This is about vaping. There are a lot of questions on that. Vaping has been declared a health epidemic and vaping on campus has resulted in disruptive false alarms. How should the school board address this or should they leave it to the individual schools? So, that would be Chris would go first.
I think this is part of student wellness outreach. We really need to be able, no matter what the issue is, vaping or any other dangerous behavior, drugs, alcohol, engage in a continuous process of ensuring and interacting with students with some sort of a reward so that they begin to understand the issue and then comply with not vaping at all or not smoking at all or not drinking at all on campus. They all have private lives, but what we really want to do is develop- But what we really want to do is develop some sort of system where there's a reward for their behavior to change. And that's a new kind of thinking. We don't want to be punitive anymore because it doesn't work. We need to engage, encourage, and reward. That does work.
Thank you. Charlie?
I agree with Chris that education is the number one solution to this issue. I've had a number of conversations with students over the last few weeks about jewels and vaping in bathrooms and classrooms. And they all agree that education is the only way to solve this problem. Teaching our students and our parents about the dangers of vaping, punitive solutions are not going to work. Prohibition is about as effective as absolutes-only sex education, which is not a... And a punitive action isn't going to solve the problem. So what we need to do, and I think this stands for question, it is a district-level decision because it requires consistent dissemination of the information across the sites. So through our wellness centers, disseminating that information about why vaping is bad for you and the potential consequences of vaping, as well as leveraging our parent education committees to teach our parents about what the danger is and how to talk to their students about it.
Thank you. Alex?
I think that, in general, we hire the staff and principals to manage the schools themselves. But overall, we are responsible as a school board. And that if they are not managing it properly, then and only then would it be acceptable for the board to intervene. And I think going along with education is that punitive measures don't work. And that for drugs especially, there's been a lot of research that money spent on rehabilitation is much more cost-effective. And that I think rehabilitation along with education is very important.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Regarding vaping, I've heard, understand that at Pali there were two or three false fire alarms this past week that they had been due to vaping. And there were more earlier in the month of September. At Pali, anyway, this is now impacting students getting their formal complement of instruction. Instead of being in class, they're out on the football field. This is a problem. And I take a different tact than some of my other candidates here, fellow candidates. I believe this is the district's responsibility to police the bathrooms, to monitor them, rather than what's happening now at Pali is to simply lock them up. For student safety and health, I believe the district and the board must assume its responsibilities. These are public buildings here at the school district. Vaping is considered smoking, and smoking is not permitted in public buildings. The district must assume its responsibility and spot check and monitor.
Thank you. Stacy?
I absolutely agree that this is a district-wide responsibility, not a site-based decision. And vaping, when some of us were in high school, the teachers knew if we were smoking because smoke would come out of the bathrooms. Vaping is a newer technology that is not as easily detectable. So the reason that students engage in at-risk behavior, we know from our work on Project Safety Net and developmental assets, that when students feel connected to their community and valued as a part of their community, they engage less in these at-risk behaviors. So while it is a part of education, it is also something that we need innovative solutions to solve. And those are likely to include the youth voices on how to address this problem. It is a district responsibility, but we absolutely need to include our student voice in how this is, how they would address a problem such as this in our schools.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm not sure exactly what it means to say that it's a district responsibility versus the school's side responsibility since it's obviously the site staff are going to have to fix it. I spoke to the superintendent about this yesterday, and I can tell you that he is holding the heat to the fire, so to speak, of the principals to address the problem. I don't know the right solution to the problem because I don't think the role of a board member is to tell the principal and assistant principals and teachers at the school how to solve a problem like this. I think the right role is to communicate clearly, which I have done and I think others have done, that this is an important problem that needs to be solved. That's not information, by the way, for, you know, these principals. If you have your kids, you know, tracing out for fire alarms, then you know that it's a problem and you want to fix it. I would say, just as a point of information, that I would make a distinction here because it turns out that it's not so much vaping that causes these false alarms, at least is what I was told, but it's actually students deliberately setting these alarms. So that's a different kind of problem that would also need to address.
Thank you. Okay, and now we go on to our next question. And the order will be Stacy, Chris, Charlie. Somebody's phoned me to be shunned. It's going to embarrass you. Ken, Kathy, and Alex. Here's the question. PAUSD has a dedicated Title IX coordinator. But what ideas do you have for executing improvements to eliminate bullying and sexual harassment and improve sex education? So Stacy goes first.
I think it's a great first step that we fire this Title IX coordinator. But compliance is only the very basic bottom level of what we need to achieve here. And we've created programs such as Unity Day in this district in cooperation with the advisory committee and other groups in our district to address bullying in a positive way. We have many programs such as How to Be an Upstander and inclusiveness and abilities awareness that educate our students in a positive way so that they don't resort to methods such as bullying. Sexual harassment as well is something that is changing fast and furious with social media. And we are, we need to continue educating in an ongoing way, our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our students in how this will or will not be tolerated in our district. And lastly, sex education, I'm all for it. Thor is education.
Thank you. Chris?
I think I'd like to face this issue straight on. The statistics are very, very frightening. Five percent of boys get sexually assaulted and twenty percent of the girls. And these are CDC nationwide statistics. One half tells a close friend, thirteen percent tell a parent, but only five percent go to the police. There is a big culture that needs to be changed. So having a coordinator is not going to do that alone. As far as bullying, sexual assault, guess who causes the majority of sexual assaults? They're people who have already a history of bullying. And harassment is ongoing at all levels of the school. This really calls for a major program of emotional wellness that becomes something that is, that all students are engaged in, all faculty are engaged in, and all staff are engaged. It's a very big problem.
Thank you. Charlie?
This is an area with three solutions: compliance, curriculum, and culture. The compliance part, we're getting down. We, the Title IX OCR recently said that we've been doing a great job, I think Ken mentioned that. And that's good, it's a good start. With curriculum, we need to continue bolstering our comprehensive sex ed curriculum because comprehensive sex education is really the best way to build healthy attitudes towards self and sexuality and build healthy relationships with other individuals. This is really, really key. The fifth and seventh graders did a survey this year after Health Connected Sex Ed was implemented. After they were done taking the consent and power dynamics curriculum portion, the majority of them said they would be more likely to report to a trusted adult behavior that was sexually harassing or bullying behavior. That's exactly the kind of response that we want. And that is key because that is directly because of our comprehensive sex education. Finally, with culture, teaching our parents what we're teaching students, why we're teaching it to them, why it's different than what they learn, and how we're teaching it to them.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, I don't think anybody could have watched the testimony this morning from Dr. Ford without understanding the long-term impacts of sexual assault on women in particular and certainly on their ability to access their education. So this is a critical question. The compliance progress that we've made is really critical. But it's really important to stop these things from happening in the first place. One of the things that we've done to address this is to put into place, well, to begin work on certainly, a district-wide social-emotional learning curriculum that goes K-12 and does the same across schools instead of the fragmented programs that we've had to this point, which are really about teaching boys and girls about how to maintain healthy boundaries and to act with respect towards each other. And then to build that into a set of practices that will, I think, make it less likely anyways that we'll be seeing this. I think this is a critical issue. And we've been working on it and we need to keep working on it.
Thank you. Kathy?
Oh, yes, thank you. Ideas about how to eliminate bullying and sexual harassment? The first thing that comes to my mind is that we need to adhere to our existing policies and procedures that we already have, which are based on existing state and federal laws. There are these state, federal anti-discrimination laws and other laws in place. It's just that unfortunately, our district has repeatedly failed to respond appropriately and under the laws. We saw the sexual assault incidents come out through the media at Pali. We've had past OCR investigations, both for sexual assault as well as for disability bullying. And we need to keep our students safe at school. To do that, we depend upon our school administrators to act appropriately. And so the board really needs to show that, that it will walk its walk and make a commitment to that, hold those who do not follow the laws accountable so that we can keep our students safe.
Thank you. Alex?
I think education is very important for the students and for the teachers. And that I think one thing to keep in mind is that it's not just sexual and bullying. That Title IX is also dealing with kind of denial of services to kids with disabilities. And that that is something that is kind of glossed over when talking about this subject. And that I think teachers need to be taught about this as well and that what they're legally obligated to provide for services and stuff. And I think we have this monitoring system or kind of reporting to them. But I think a third-party investigation for the, kind of what's going on, is important for a non-biased account.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to question eight. This is going to be in this order. Charlie, Stacy, Kathy, Alex, Ken, and Chris. Okay? What is your opinion on delaning or laning? And what would you do if you were a board member to ensure all students receive appropriate challenge and support?
So the MATD, which is the Minority Achievement and Talent Development Task Force, said, they had a report that basically pointed to laning as a big issue when it comes to minority students. Laning does not benefit them. Laning does not help the achievement gap. So it's a real problem. It's one of those issues that we have to grapple with because we need to find a way to make education work for all of our students, especially those who are most underserved. Now, the one thing that is difficult about this issue, and it's a nuanced issue, is that we don't want to take away opportunities for other students to achieve. And I want to encourage everybody to think about these as non mutually exclusive. We can maintain these high expectations for our students while building the bottom end of that, building the engagement and the intrinsic motivation to learn with these innovative engagement programs, real-life application, so that students are motivated internally to set those high expectations for themselves once they go on to college and beyond.
Thank you. Stacy?
Laning has both its benefits and its downsides. And it is important that our students have the opportunity to be challenged, to grow their curiosity in a subject that doesn't fit neatly sometimes into lanes. However, when you're managing a large public district as we are, one of the things we have to do is allocate teachers and decide how many of each type of class we're going to offer. So it's important that the focus not be just on are students put in lanes or not, but rather are they learning and are they enjoying learning and motivated to continue learning? So it is part of a practice that has been on and off used for many years, and it is not the end of innovation of how we address both the high-achieving students, the middle students, as well as those that are struggling.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes. I support laning. While I wouldn't want to prejudge any proposal that might come forward about some individual proposal about delaning in general, I would favor retaining laning so that our students might progress at their own level and at their own pace. Almost all high schools in the United States use laning. Middle schools too. At Divenec, we even had mouth laning that took place in third grade. That was done, when I spoke to the teachers, it was done to help the lower-level students so they could learn at their own pace rather than have to stay at the pace of the higher-level students. So for me, to sum up, I believe that lanes can be beneficial for the different segments of students to allow students to get more personalized instruction at their own level and pace. And I think we need to make sure with lanes that we're serving all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
I think there's two different issues here. And I think one of them is if we are going to continue laning, that we need to make sure that the kids are in their appropriate lanes. And I think a big problem in this is the twice-exceptional group of students with disabilities, where because they have a disability, teachers try and force them to be in a lower lane even though they are incredibly intelligent and work well in higher lanes. And then, I mean, the other thing that laning does is that in psychology, if you say that the stu- if you give a group of students to a teacher and say that they are bad students and they are unintelligent, they will treat them very differently. And so I think this is some cause for worry in a lower lane, that the students might be treated badly and get a worse education.
Thank you.
Laning is a pedagogical tool like any other tool. My practice as a board member is to rely on the professional judgment of teachers about pedagogical decisions. So when teachers have come forward in the delaning English nine, I think, and also an algebra class at Dunn, I've supported those decisions because those are the decisions that teachers are making. In both those cases, they essentially said that the two lanes were equivalent but were different in terms of the students who were in the lanes. And that's not acceptable, obviously, in a public education setting. So I think the thing that we need to do here and in so many other places is to make sure that we are supporting the professional judgment of teachers and that we are ensuring that students have educational opportunities and that they don't forestall options later because of their capabilities at one point in time. We need to have a growth mentality, you know, around this just like in every other pedagogical decision that we're making.
Thank you. And Chris?
I think we have to ask ourselves, let's take mathematics as an example. Do we want our kids to think as a mathematician would think? Or do we want our kids to think as people who quickly learn procedures that they apply over and over and over and get good grades in tests? And this is kind of an issue. Research at Stanford shows that when kids are mixed together, kids have higher, shall we say, abilities teach kids with lower abilities. There's a lot of social interactions. They solve problems together. And laning is a crutch. And an example of the failure of laning, I think, is the attempt at math. We tried to split off this separate track, and people in that track are supposed to proceed at an accelerated rate. It turned out to be very insufficient. And none of our kids, for example, are measuring up to world standards in math. So we need to work harder.
Thank you. Okay, next question in this order. Alex, Ken, Stacy, Chris, Charlie, and Kathy. And this is a related question, okay? The school board passed a resolution acknowledging dyslexia as a condition impacting one out of five students. How might the district improve services for these students, K through 12? So that's Alex first.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry, I read the last part.
Well, this is about the resolution acknowledging dyslexia as a condition impacting one out of five students. And how might the district improve services for these students, K through 12?
So I might not necessarily have dyslexia, but I have encountered problems that might be similar where tests are too tightly bunched together with questions. And I have missed questions completely just not being able to see them on tests. And so I think spacing out questions and giving people enough room to do their work and to see everything is a very important issue. And that cramming everything in is very disruptive towards that group of people.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, I think early screening for dyslexia and then intervention is the right approach. One of the most, one of my most memorable moments as a board member was hearing our student board member say that he had not been diagnosed with dyslexia until he was in high school, which means that, you know, that's years and years when he didn't get the support that he needed and therefore didn't get the full benefit of the education in our schools. So, I think it's critically important to have early screening and then to, and then to actually, you know, bring in an active way measures to help students learn.
Thank you. Stacy?
Early intervention is key. However, diagnosis of dyslexia in very young children has some difficult opportunities. The important thing that we do if we find that our students are struggling in this area is we need to use a strength-based model rather than a deficit-based model, because it's highly stigmatizing at any age to be told, "You can't do what everybody else is doing and you have to have this special intervention", which clearly is perceived as less than what the other children are receiving. Second of all, we need to track more closely, more regularly to the goals, so that if a goal is set that is achievable and that the student does not achieve that goal by a certain date, either the goal was incorrectly set or the intervention was inappropriate and one of them needs to be changed, so that we are tracking on a no less than quarterly basis how students are improving towards these goals, because progress can and will be made in dyslexia at all ages if those methods are followed.
Thank you. Chris?
I think this question is so important. We are all special education people. There are multiple modalities of learning in every single one of us. There are no two of us in this room that think alike. And what we need to realize is dyslexia is only a tiny focus of what is necessary to support all students. I was touring a public, no, it was a private, very expensive, very prestigious school, and they said, "We give each one of our students an IEP." This is how high achievement is actually done. And what may shock everybody here, and it shouldn't, is that Albert Einstein himself was a special education student and he spent a great part of his life at the Foreman School as a board advisor to implement across the board from K to 12 special learning strategies for all students. We throw students into this complex world, but we don't teach them how to learn.
Thank you. Shunner?
The hardest question is really, are we adapting our learning environment to teach to our students? Or are we forcing our students to adapt to a more rigid learning environment? And we should always be striving for the former. With respect to dyslexia, as some of the other candidates have said, screening and early intervention is key. And the next step is bringing professionals into the classrooms, increasing our professional learning for our teachers to make sure that they are able to actually support those students with dyslexia and they are able to identify if a student has dyslexia and they are well-versed in the tools that they need to provide students with the same high-quality learning as the rest of the students.
Thank you. Alex? No, am I in the right place? Whoops. Ah, you're done. Did you tell me that one?
Uh, yeah.
Kathy? I'm sorry. Kathy, okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, go on. And you are okay, but we can start, okay? I agree with many of the other candidates, that of course, early identification and intervention would be key, screening. And recognizing, I think, as maybe Alex mentioned, that all of us are individuals and have individual learning styles. And thus, we would want to work with the family and the student to understand what those individual learning styles and possibly what individual accommodations might be needed for that student, so that they can be provided within our district. Another thing that would be important is making sure that our district, in providing those accommodations, is compliant with the law. That would be incredibly important in serving our students. Thank you.
Okay. Give them a little time for a bunch more questions. You're doing great.
It's the questions that are great. There's a million questions.
It's giving me the question. I'm not getting much. Okay. This is on transitional kindergarten. You think the school district, oh, well, let me tell you the order. It's going to be Ken, Kathy, Chris, Shunner, Alex, and Stacy. So, do you think the school district should expand transitional kindergarten to all elementary school sites? You know, Greendale?
I think it's a proposal worth considering. I've heard it discussed among staff. I mean, I think it's clearly better for students if they have access to a school that's in their neighborhood. So, you know, if it makes sense fiscally and logistically, then we should do it.
Kathy? I agree. I think that transitional kindergarten sounds like a valuable program and it would be ideal to have it be available to the neighborhoods if possible. Of course, all the fiscal management being responsible with our tax dollars, trying to be efficient and cost-effective in providing the best education to our students would be a very important factor in considering that.
Thank you. Chris?
Transitional kindergarten is so important. Learning starts at the earliest age. We need to take a look, take a visit to Italy and see what the regulatory media system does. It believes in a hundred different modalities of learning, of music, of sound, and all sorts of languages which are brought in at the earliest age of child. Light, music, everywhere. You walk into our places, they're drab, and we need many more of them. It's so important to have one-on-one involvement with mentors who must be of the highest quality with these early-age children. And it really is a place for beauty and happiness to begin to invade the spirit of kids, so that their learning flourishes.
Thank you. Shunner?
I think that somebody was listening to my opening statement and then took a quote and then turned it into this question. Because this is what I said. Absolutely, we should be expanding our transitional kindergarten. Greendale is growing. And having transitional kindergarten at every elementary school is really key to closing that achievement and that opportunity gap. All the studies show that that gap increases up till 3rd grade and then it's almost impossible to bridge it later on. Not to say we shouldn't try, that we should continue to do so, but getting the solution at the beginning is important. And transitional kindergarten does just that. It allows students the opportunity to get into that school environment and to learn when their brains are so plastic and when their potential for development is infinite. So we should absolutely be expanding our TKU programs.
Thank you. Alex?
I think the program sounds like it's very useful. And I think if we already have it implemented in some schools and in some areas and not in others, I think that's a very big issue on inequality to minorities and people who might not have access to that area. And that if we're going to provide it at all, we should provide it to everyone who needs it.
Thank you. Stacy, Stacy, right?
Yes. Transitional kindergarten, location of your school, whether it's preschool or transitional kindergarten or regular kindergarten class is very important to parents of young children. Driving across town in traffic is not an enjoyable thing or an easy thing with young children. So if the supply keeps up with the demand, then yes, we should pursue expanding the program to additional neighborhood school sites. It is just one of the many differences we have across neighborhoods in our school, such as American Sign Language being offered at Pally but not at Gunn, therapeutic classrooms only in certain schools, and language immersion only in two of our schools. Separate is not equal, so I do think we should consider expanding that so that the neighborhood offerings are equitable.
Thank you. If we're done with Ken, okay, that's the question number, I'm not waiting. He says the next question ought to be the last. Okay, I have a good one for the last one. Yeah. It's saying here's one for the last one, because it's very much what the lead wants. So the last question is going to be in this order.
Well, we haven't started talking.
I know, I'm going to give it to you.
This is the appetizer of what they're bringing to you.
Yes. Okay, so the last question will be Chris, Shunner, Alex, Kathy, Stacy, and Ken. Okay? Okay. So, how might PAUSD build civic habits? Should elements of social justice and concepts of privilege be more widely part of the curriculum? Could you speak that again? Sorry, that was a tough one. Yeah, I know. That's what I was saying to Alex.
Give us the card to pass around?
How might the school district build civic habits? Should elements of social justice and concepts of privilege be more widely part of the curriculum? And so that was Chris first.
I think that what is important in these topics, these are critical topics. They're, this is such a good question. The important thing is, how do we apply critical thinking in each one of these areas? How do we get people to analyze what a civic duty is, to understand what it is, to go through social justice in a way that they actually are thinking the issues for themselves, debating, interacting, and that it is fresh? This is something that really requires experiential learning. And this can be very much helped by the research arm that Dr. McGee brought in, which is this authentic research. All of these, like, authentic projects would really bring kids out of their shells into experiencing new things that they need to know as adults.
Thank you. Shunner?
Social Justice Pathways at Pally is an example of an innovative, integrated curricula that seeks to do exactly this. And we should absolutely expand more of our programs to teach our students civics, privilege, the discussions that are so critical to becoming not just great college applicants, but great members of society. One real concrete example is the school renaming issue that we are all familiar with. This was a great missed opportunity to teach our students that type of civic engagement firsthand. An opportunity for students to engage in those same types of discussions that we have been having on a national level, about Confederate statues, about the history of a name, about what's important in terms of institutional names. And yet, many students and all the students I've talked to felt cut out of the process, even though the students were the genesis of the issue to begin with. And so, being real cognizant of the ways in which we can offer our students real-life opportunities to engage in how this district is run and how our policies that affect every day of our students are put into place.
Thank you. Alex?
I'm not quite sure exactly what the question means. If I had more time, I'd probably look at a dictionary. But I think, based on what others have said, that getting people involved is important. I think with this getting rid of zero period, even though it might have been a good decision, there was no involvement of the students in discussing it. They just kind of removed it. And I think giving students an opportunity to interact would be important.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. And this is a tough question. What is, what are civic habits? I agree with Alex. It sounds to me like, how can we encourage participation and greater participation, both from our students as well as from our community, which includes our parents? To me, it means that all voices should be heard, not just those who agree with necessarily the establishment or status quo. By engaging our community and our students, so that all of our voices may be heard, I think we could encourage and build civic habits. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
Civics is a top priority of mine to instruct our students. And a difficult thing in the past to explain to students why classes like history and government had importance. Fortunately or unfortunately, now our young people are very much aware of the importance of civic responsibility. The Social Justice Pathway is a phenomenal new program at Pally. And again, we have this disparity between the two different high schools. We have a women's studies elective class that's been offered at Gunn in the past, a curriculum that's available, but it doesn't have enough students enrolled. Programs gain popularity when they are promoted and students take them and other people take them. So, we need to expand this education integrated into our history, our English, our psychology. Even our math classes can address the issues of demographics and discrimination in many areas of this country. And students can learn firsthand why it matters to be involved in the civic process.
Thank you. Ken?
I think our students are at a moment in history when they really feel their urgency. You know, our democracy seems threatened. Their future in a world of changing climate is uncertain. And they feel that sense of urgency. We don't need to tell them about it. They bring that. And I'll take a little bit of issue with Alex. Those students who were upset with me on zero period, they showed up and they filled this room on several occasions. So they know how to come and advocate for themselves. They understand the urgency. So I think it's more about meeting them where they are. The Social Justice Pathway is about meeting a need, not creating awareness. And I think the more we can do things like that, to really listen to students and understand what their fears and hopes and anxieties are and to provide them the guidance and material that they need to turn that into understanding, into action, the better off they'll be. And I think that's work that happens, you know, teacher by teacher and school by school.
Thank you. Well, that finishes our question and answer period. And I, you know, I really thought we would only have time for like six questions, but we got to eleven. And I want to thank the audience for such great questions. And I tried, you know, there were groups that were similar, and I tried to, you know, ask those questions, I think, with the more... Oh, these were the rest of the questions. But you'll have an opportunity to have more questions to speak to the candidates outside when we're done. So now we have closing statements, and each of the candidates will have a minute and a half. And this is the order's reversed from when they gave their opening statements. So all of us reminded, since you may have forgotten. Shunner, Kathy, Stacy, Ken, Alex, and Chris. Okay? So are you ready with your opening statements?
No.
Any closing statements?
I'm not going to spend ninety seconds summarizing my positions or my background or my experience to convince you that I'm the best candidate for this job. I hope that my answers have done that tonight. I want to spend the next minute reflecting with you, if I may. You know, with campaigning, it often comes down to bold statements and grand visions. And those are important. But governing is so much more than that. It's not the ninety-second answer. It's the ninety-minute answer. It's the ninety-day plan. It is nuance and thoughtfulness and the willingness to grapple with the real difficult questions that don't have a yes or no answer. The willingness to really move beyond buzzwords like innovative solutions or increasing engagement, really just get in the weeds with what matters. And governing is consensus building. It's strong advocacy tempered with stronger cooperation. And I believe I have the skills and the experience for governance. And that's what this district needs, governance. And in the coming days and weeks, I urge you to please come up to me at Farmer's Market or reach out to me or fellow candidates and ask me a question that matters to you. And when I answer, ask me, "Well, what's next?" And when I answer that, ask me, "Well, what about after that?" Because I've grappled with these issues and I'm excited to share my ninety-minute answer with you.
Ninety seconds. Kathy?
Thank you again to many of the women voters and to PTAF premises for tonight. In closing, I'd like to say that we have a lot to be proud of in our district. We have great teachers. We have great community support. We have great facilities, and of course, we have our great, great students. These are our children in this school district. And we want to provide them with an excellent education and also an excellent experience in our schools. To do this, our school district needs oversight from our school board and also from our community, to make sure that it stays on the right path, making sure to put our students first, first and foremost. But also to manage our finances, to manage our tax dollars responsibly, and be transparent and accountable to us, the community. And change is needed on the school board to do that. If I'm elected, I plan to serve you, my constituents, our constituents, to help make sure our students, our children, come first and to seek to provide our children with an excellent education. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
I believe my experience of being a parent in this district for all these years and also being involved in the process with our teachers, staff, and administration and the board has given me a true deep understanding of what we can do, what we have done, and how to move forward in a positive direction. I believe that open, representative communication is what I will work for. That cooperation among the groups, mutual respect and trust among parents and teachers and the board. We all have the best intents for our students. So we have to build on that because if we continue to come at it from an approach of appliance, compliance, and negativity, then we are not going to achieve the outcome we want to achieve, which is we all want to raise our students to be happy, healthy, wealthy, and wise. And don't take wealthy for granted because it doesn't come for free to every child in our district. And I look forward to working with this community in continued capacity to work towards these goals for all students.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks to the lady of the women voters and to the PTA council and to the audience for this opportunity. It's always a privilege to campaign and to spend this time talking about our students and our schools. It's been an honor for me, or really an honor, to serve the students of this district and to do the best that I could do to put students first in the decision-making of the district. You can look at my record, I talked about it at the beginning. I think it's a record of real progress on a lot of dimensions. I think it may be politically smart sometimes not to acknowledge that process, but I don't think it reflects the reality. And it doesn't really help us to move forward to the real challenges that we have in front of us. So I'm going to continue with your support and your help now and beyond the election, if you choose to support me again, to continue to show up and do my best to put students first in this district. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alex.
I think it's great for everyone to support their candidates and to give feedback to the candidates. And I think, I hope you support me, but whether I win or not, I think whether your candidate wins or not, don't just stop there. Give your feedback and comments to whoever wins. And all candidates have some things that they might have a better perspective on than the others. And that everyone has good points. And that make sure that you keep the candidates who win responsible to implement some of the points that others have made that are good ideas, that they don't need to come up with everything themselves. And that, I think another thing is that I hope even if I don't win, I can encourage other younger people to become politically active and to go out and, you know, do their own thing. And that I think nowadays, a lot more younger people are becoming active, whether it's in business or in politics. I mean, the heads of companies used to be old people and now you have people like Zuckerberg who is relatively young compared to other CEOs and heads of companies. And so I think the younger generation is in control and will be in control in the future. And that, you know, get out and get active while you can, early.
Thank you, and Chris.
Above all, I think that we really need to take hold of this magical time. We're so lucky to be talking about education at a time when the technology has changed so fundamentally. It's hard to find a historical precedent. If we go back to monastic times, we see a technology of manuscripts and a whole culture of education and study that grew out of the monastic technology of reproducing and containing knowledge and passing it on. Today, in fifteen years, every single aspect of technology has changed so that we have a supercomputer in our hands. It can link us to all the knowledge in all the minds of the world. We don't need textbooks, that already is obsolete. We can link directly into researchers, have them teach our students. And we need to change the role and support the role of teachers. They need to be given more time, more freedom, more resources to be created and interact one-on-one with students. We should never have a class size like twenty-five students and think that the budget is balanced. Reduce it to fifteen as you find schools in Massachusetts and Connecticut. But above all, it's a unique time to have a very lively process and we must make learning efficient.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank the candidates for caring enough about city and our school district to run for office and to attend this forum. I know it's lovely to be in the hot seat. I don't know. There are some other thank yous that are very, very important that I need to make. First, we need to thank Jeanie Lithcock, who got us. Megan Squeezey Togiri and Sue Herbston, who sorted the questions and got them to me. Kina Loverchek and Kathy Miller, who held up all the, kept everybody on time. And Chad Wood Anderson and Jean McDonald, who picked up all your questions and brought them over to the question desk. And Jase, I want to say it's not Jase, from PTAC, or Jase? She helped us in organizing. And of course, the media center for taping this and broadcasting. And I don't know when they'll tell us when we'll be able to broadcast, but just check channel twenty-six every so often and see what exciting things are happening on there. So we have to get out of here by nine o'clock so there's time to talk with each other and to talk to the candidates outside, they have their materials. Also, outside, are they all outside? All, they're also the legal reporters because we have, as I mentioned before, the city council candidate forum is coming up next Tuesday. It'll be the first confrontational search on Los Angeles, seven P M. Oh, it's channel twenty-eight? Oh, okay, channel twenty-eight. Okay, oh, I don't know.
The city council forum is on the map.
On what I say?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, on the map. Oh, that's the second, oh, it's another week from now.
Two whole weeks.
And we have a number of, we call them pros and cons on the ballot makers. Those are always interesting to go to, that you'll learn about all those ballot makers. And we also have voter registration forms out there and registered information about the lead. Is there something else? I'm losing you. Don't forget to vote!